I will open the City of Beaumont Council Meeting, the special session, at 4:45 on February 20, 2018. Could I have a call to order, please?
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara is absent.
Councilmember Lara is ill.
Oh, okay. Mayor Proton Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
We don't have any public comments?
No requests to speak.
Item two, did you want to open that up?
Yeah, so the council's going to meet in closed session, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1, one case, City of Beaumont versus Joseph Akloofi at all case number RIC And then we'll come back when we're done with that closed session for the regular meeting.
Mr. Pinkney, for the record, can you tell us why we're having a special session? It's not part of the other closed session?
Well, there's some issues that have come up in connection with this case, that relate to this case, that I really wanted to be able to, they're time-sensitive, and I wanted to be able to talk to you this evening about them.
And we didn't know about the, when the agenda went out?
We didn't know about them last week.
Okay.
In time to put it on the agenda. And under the Brown Act, you can notice a special meeting on 24 hours' notice, and so this isn't being done as a late add item. It's being done as an agendized item through its special meeting rules set forth in the Brown Act.
Thank you.
You have to adjourn us to closed session.
We are going into closed session at 4:47. We are out of closed session at 5:22. We discussed item number two, and we are going to get a report from our city attorney on the results of our closed session.
So, item two was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1, one case, City of Beaumont versus Joseph Akloofi, case number RIC 1712036. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. I will close the special session at 5:23. I will open our city council meeting closed session at 5:23 on February 20. And this item, do we need to do a roll call again for this?
Yeah, just for the record.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara is absent. Mayor Proton Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here. We do not have any public comment?
No requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. John, our city attorney, John Pinkney, would you please read the items of discussion?
So, the council's now, as part of its regular meeting, going to go into closed session. Item two is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6. The city designated representative is the city manager, Todd Parton, and the bargaining units are the Beaumont managers, police managers, Police Officers Association, police sergeants, professional technical, police safety support services, general unit SEIU Local 721, and customer service coordinators SEIU Local 721. And then the third item that we're going to discuss in closed session is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 2495-6.9D1, Dora Leon versus Beaumont Police Department at all, case number RIC 1722990. Okay, I'm sorry, there's a typo on that. It's Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1.
Thank you.
And that's it. Those are the items.
I'll adjourn to closed session at 5:25. Closed session at 6:03. And do we have anything to report out? I should have asked you that before I adjourned it, Sean.
Just very briefly, on item two, the council met in closed session, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.6, city designated representative is city manager Todd Parton, and also Carrie Mendoza, and the bargaining units, the Beaumont managers, police managers, Police Officers Association, police sergeants, professional technical, police safety support services, general unit SEIU Local 721, customer service coordinators SEIU Local 721, and there was no reportable action taken on that item. Item three was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1, Dora Leon versus Beaumont Police Department at all, case number RIC 1722990. And there was reportable action on that. Councilmember White made a motion, and there was a second by Mayor Carroll, to authorize the city attorney to defend the case that's been filed against the city. And the vote was Carroll in favor of defending it, Martinez in favor of defending, White in favor of defending, and Santos also in favor of defending. And that's a report out.
Thank you. With that, I would open the regular council meeting at 6:05 PM. Could I have a call to order, please?
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara is absent. Mayor Proton Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here. As we mentioned earlier, for the earlier session, Councilmember Lara is ill. So, with that, could I, our city manager, would you do the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any conflict of interest disclosures that need to be made?
I'll be recusing myself on number 19.
Thank you. Do we have announcements, recognition, proclamations? No, thank you. Public comments. This is the public comment period for items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I will open the public comment period at 6:06.
First speaker is Arthur Cabral.
There we go. All right. Apologize, I'm trying to kick the cold as well. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Arthur Cabral, representing the Flare Lounge. We're currently going through the CUP process. Oh, started great. Sorry, it's my first time, so. But we're currently going through the CUP process with the city. We're hoping to be added to the agenda for the planning commission next Tuesday. But the reason I'm addressing you guys today is because the city is now requiring, well, I can't say now, but from my understanding, speaking with current business owners, that it's a new process called a shared parking agreement. The reason I bring it to the attention of the council today is because part of that agreement is an agreement between property owners of the property in which the business is being maintained, or is being held at. The reason it's a concern is that part of that parking agreement is getting the owners of the property to agree to have shared parking from other businesses. It's a daunting task because not only are most of the property owners removed, meaning they're actually subleasing that space or subleasing that property, but now that business owner has no idea who we are as the business owner, I'm sorry, us as the business owner is now having to go and talk to the property owners and asking them to add our business owner on their insurance. And that's basically kind of a daunting task, and I have started meeting with Ms. Day here in hoping to overcome that. But before that agreement, before the agreement was brought to us, we actually had the shared parking agreement signed, but our verbiage on our agreement wasn't good enough, so the city attorney drafted one. We took that agreement to the business owners, and when we initially had three signed parking agreements, all three backed out. So essentially, what it's looking at now is if we can't establish the parking agreements, we can no longer do business. This business has been established for about seven years. We would be the new business coming in, continuing to run the lounge that's right here in Beaumont, literally, you know, next door to you guys. And so, that's my concern. That's something I would like the council, if possible, to address or bring back up, possibly either altering or having some type of amendment to that parking agreement, because after speaking with the property owners, they're not going to add another property owner on their liability insurance. And that's what the biggest problem is right now, is they're not comfortable adding somebody else's liability to their own insurance, to their business, which they have no involvement in. So essentially, the city's asking, for instance, the generations, gifts, and antiques to have liability for a bar. It's two different businesses, but that's currently what they're asking them to do, is to cover anything that could happen at the bar, which they have no control over. So, thank you for hearing me out today. Once again, my name is Arthur Cabral, representing the Flare Lounge, 444 East Sixth Street in Beaumont.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No other speakers.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public comment period at 6:10 PM. Items, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Do I, approval of all ordinances and resolutions are to be read by title only, and do I have any requests to pull any items from the consent calendar? All right, no, then I'll ask for a motion to approve if there are none to be pulled.
I'll move on to items on the consent calendar, number one through seven.
One second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Item eight. Avoiding bid for parking and administrative citation processing services. Do we have anyone that's, ah, there she is. Mercedes, are you addressing this?
I can help answer questions, but I'll defer to the chief.
All right. Thank you, chief.
You're absolutely welcome. We're expecting another presenter, but I can fill in. So, on September 5, we requested that council give the authority to seek RFPs for an administrative citation processing service. Currently, we're using a lot of staff time of our animal control officers, our community enhancement officer, some of Mercedes' time, and some other time. But each one of these citations is handwritten, entered in the system, then it's mailed, and then if it's not paid, then there's additional mailers, additional collection. And we believe, very much like the pet data system, where we basically took all the tracking of our vaccinations and our licensing and outsourced that, and then they just collect a small portion of the admin fee from that, they keep that, there's no direct payment from the city to these vendors. This would be very similar in that sense. In addition to that, with this agreement, we would receive 10 handheld electronic citation writers, which could be used by our motor enforcement officers, our school resource officer, some patrol, and our enforcement animal control. Therefore, not only saving time in the field, so they can get on to the next incident, but then that information's uploaded directly to the vendor. And in this process, the committee selected a vendor. That vendor, there was, I believe, seven RFPs. Four of them just couldn't even, some didn't know what they were putting in for, all right off the bat. There was three very good competitive vendors, but the one that was able to perform an onsite demonstration at the time of their interview and had the system that is most compatible and the proven track record with local law enforcement agencies in the Inland Empire area was Turbo Data Systems. They were ultimately chosen by the committee. We reviewed the agreement. The city attorney reviewed the agreement, where there's the minor language clarification. She was sent back, it was accepted by Turbo Data Systems, and we're asking you to approve, in this case, a three-year agreement. The reason we're asking for that, there is some, a lot of backend work by the vendor that has to be set up to build their fields. So, each department may collect information differently in a different type of screen or a format. They need to build some of that, and then, and then the pricing reflects a three-year agreement. You know, I can understand companies not wanting to put in a lot of work and think on a year, you know, I may not be able to have this, and I just put all this legwork in for a year's worth of agreement. And so, we are asking for a three-year agreement on this. And so, the vendor is here. I'm here for any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Questions from council? First, do we have any requests to speak on this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Okay, just a couple. Chief, I didn't, you mentioned that this could be used for animal services, but I didn't see it in the contract. So, it was mentioned in the summary?
Absolutely. So, they're, they still write up the same type of citation, administrative citation.
Okay, so it's under administrative.
Now, they have the opportunity to cite people into the court system, but most of these things can be handled through an administrative process, where we still retain a local jurisdiction.
Okay. And then, I was concerned with the three-year. So, my question is, is there any out?
There is an out, absolutely. That was the language that the city attorney assisted us with as well. So, if they're not living up to their end of the agreement, or we're not, we give each other, I believe, a 90-day.
It's, so what it provides in section 18 is that if one of the parties reaches their obligations under the agreement, and that obligation remains, that breach remains uncured for 30 days after notice, then the agreement can be terminated. If the breach can't be cured within 30 days, then the party receiving the notice can so indicate, and then they would have up to 60 days to cure.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the last question I have, what can we expect to see as far as savings or benefits from the program? I mean, are we looking at the cost recovery through the citations that are received?
Yeah. Great question. And so, there's two, there's a direct and an indirect. The direct is that we have a method to collect on the citations that we're currently writing. So, you need a carrot and a stick. You need people to understand that if you don't fix, you know, this animal licensing issue or this community enhancement issue, that there's a penalty. And currently, the amount of staff time that's directly involved in collection, and then to go through a lien process, well, if you never were to sell your house or require a permit to, let's say, upgrade or add a pool, you know, and you're just going to pass the house through generations, there'd be no reason to pay it. And so, this gives us tools to, to, the way we currently do with our parking citations. The indirect is that you're going to have the staff time spent more responsibly in the field, instead of at their cubicles, generating a lot of handwritten work.
All right. Quick question. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. On the lease, does it include all the repair and maintenance, all inclusive, on the lease agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. Does it, does it, the increase, it says on the budget in here, you're going to put 2580, 2,580. Is that, you know, incremented, or just strictly good for three years? So, we could see the budget really, you know, consistent on the budget?
Yes. Great question. And so, one of my main questions I asked the committee myself was, you know, what is the value of the 2580 lease? And, you know, what if it's not panning out? What if, you know, so, so we're not going to be writing a check for that 2580? That is taken out of the fees. So, when they collect and then they pass down our dividend, they're going to hold that portion back. Now, so my question was, okay, so for not, the first month, I was concerned that we would have to outlay some capital while this process is getting up and running, and that's going to be prorated, so that we're not laying out any capital until they're caught up. But looking at the survey cities, one's in Samuel County, the other one's in Riverside County, it hasn't been an issue with the lease impacting what they're collecting.
Very good. Good job. May I have a couple of questions?
Councilmember White?
What's about our annual revenue on citation fees? Any idea?
Great question. Do you know that one?
I'm not sure offhand, but I do know that when we presented in September, there was approximately $150,000 in code enforcement fines that were sitting uncollected.
Okay. And just an idea of the range in an individual citation, you know, what's the lowest that I would be asked to pay if I violated something?
So, for a citation, it would start at $100, go to 200, 500. If it's a building code violation, it could go up to 1,000. And then, it's 500 or 1,000 every day thereafter for the violation.
Okay.
And it depends on severity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? I have a question. The, this is going to be data transmitted over the cloud, and is there any exposure or liability on our part for if there's any loss of privacy? Because they don't handle the security of the data efficiently enough. Now, you may not be able to answer that question, but that might be for the city attorney. But this is sensitive.
Well, let me answer this part of it, that I can answer.
Sure.
So, the information on a citation is information that would be released publicly, anyway. So, if we send something to the court, it, you know, there's certain information that may be redacted as a birth date, but on administrative citations, I don't even believe there's a space for birth dates, right?
So, you don't see any risk?
No. I don't see any issue that the information being transmitted wouldn't be public information. That would be concerning, that most of that can get from tax assessor or Freedom of Information Act.
And will we be able to use this for animal citations or animal records as far as, you know, violations is right out of the gate, or is it just going to be installed in different phases for each one of these areas?
I'll defer that, but the four major areas are going to be our traffic violations, the parking, and the administrative citations, which cover both animal control and community enhancement.
All right, so it's folded in?
Yeah. But as far as the encryption, where's the Turbo Data? Maybe you could speak to the encryption?
Yeah, thank you. If I may answer, my name is Eli. I'm a vice president, Turbo Data. As far as the hardware, the system or the solution we're providing is a 4G connected device, which is secure, in the sense that nobody can just grab it and log into it and do whatever they need to do with it to capture data off of it. The data is transmitted to our system, to the cloud, is what they call SSL certificate, encrypted, data reaches our cloud, and no one from the public can connect to that data. Only city personnel or the city network will work with your IT department to provide the firewall connection to our network and our systems. Therefore, they'll be able to look at the record they've issued. Over time, they can search, query, and find other information about the data they're sending to us. And the last piece is that data is sitting in our system. We will make that available to your records personnel here at the PD to submit to the court or to handle any other part of that citation beyond issuance and beyond our part of it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor, I move to approve and authorize Beaumont Police Department to enter a three-year contract with Turbo Data Systems for moving parking and administrative citation processing services.
I'll second this.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
And Councilman White, to ask your, answer your question about the revenue generated, we are budgeting about $88,000 in traffic vehicle or moving vehicle fines, and about $5,000 in parking fines, and then you're in the neighborhood about $60,000 on code enforcement and code enforcement fines that are collected. So, that's about what the impact per year is.
Yeah. I glance it over on a 140, 142.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, appointments to the Economic Development Committee and the Finance and Audit Committee for vacancies that are existing. Do you, do we have any public comments on this?
We do not, not on this item.
All right, thank you.
We do have two vacancies and two applicants, and I believe the applicants are here, should you have any questions.
Okay. Do you want to just read the introduction, and then we can open it up to council members' questions after we get an introduction to the candidates? We can call them up one at a time. Would you go ahead, Nicole?
Sure. And so, after the recent annual appointments to the Finance and Audit Committee, as well as the Economic and Development Committee, both committees still hold vacant positions. So, on the Economic Development Committee, we have a vacancy of a business community member, and on Finance and Audit, we have an alternate member vacancy. We put out a notice of vacancy and received two applications, one for each committee. The applicant for the Economic Development Committee is Kathleen Dietrich, and for the Finance and Audit Committee, we have an applicant of Andrew Forster.
Thank you, Nicole. Is Kathleen Dietrich here? Hi, Kathleen. Would you like to come up and meet us?
I sure would.
Thanks.
Nice to have you, for you to have to here. So, I'll introduce myself. Kathleen Dietrich, and I'm with Priority Palette, the vice president of Priority Palette, and it's on Third Street, right here in Beaumont. We are currently employing about 130 employees. We've been in the great city of Beaumont since 1999, and I'm proud to say that most of our employees come from either Banning or Beaumont, so they are local residents. And we're very proud of that, and we're trying to grow. So, having, being a part of the Economic Development Committee would be something I'd really like to be a part of. I don't know about qualifications. I mean, I've been a business owner for, since I was 19 years old. I've been in the palette business since I was 19 years old. And so, when I joined our parent company, there were nine employees, so I've been a part of watching that grow to over 300 in Southern California. So, hopefully, with a little bit of that experience and, you know, coupled with knowledge, and also working with the city of Beaumont to establish our business here, to do some improvements, a recent improvement that we just, you know, got approval for, I would hope that I would be, you know, a contributing member and have something to bring to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from council members?
If there's no objection, I'd like to move to approve... If there's no objection, I'd like to move to approve Ms. Dietrich to the Economic Development Committee.
I think that's a great idea. I'll second it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor member Santos?
Yes.
Counselor member White?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Our second consideration is for the Finance and Audit Committee, and that's Andrew Forster. Andrew, would you like to come up and meet us?
So my name's Andrew Forster. I've been doing banking and finance for about twelve years now, over in Wells Fargo at the moment in Beaumont, and I've been over in America now for a couple of years. So unfortunately, you are stuck with me now.
Thank you for volunteering for this position. I very much appreciate it. I don't have any questions for Andrew because I met Andrew at the Chamber of Commerce dinner, and so I got to know a little bit about him at that dinner and why he wanted to serve, but I would like to open it up to council members, if you would like to ask any questions of Mr. Forster.
Probably the only thing I need is briefly give me your background here and also in Europe.
Okay. So I originally started out working for HSBC, doing some of their account management, and then went to Wells Fargo, where I entered into small business consultancy and business banking. Once I did that for about four years, I ended up going back to university and paying for myself to get a degree in business management and financing. Then I went to work for the university itself, doing finance and administration for three of the largest research groups in Europe, which then went on from being becoming research groups to research centers, and we helped do all of their proposals and planning applications for that. Three years ago, I moved over to Beaumont and the Banning area to become a permanent resident in the U.S. with my wife. Because of that, I then went back into banking over here, so I've been at Wells Fargo, and I'm now their new business specialist for the area. So I have quite a lot of experience in finance. I will be honest, I'm a little bit unsure about some of the intricacies of your tax laws over here, as I'm just getting used to that, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I move to approve appointing Andrew Forster to our Finance and Audit Committee.
I'll second that.
And Andrew, you know about our meeting schedule and everything already?
I have not been informed of the exact details of it, but I'm sure I can make it work.
All right. It's, it's the first Monday of every month at six P.M. here.
Not a problem. I can definitely make that work.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I think we need a vote, right?
Yes.
Counselor member Santos?
Yes.
Counselor member White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Excellent. That's all right.
Thank you.
I think it makes Mr. Forster feel better to know we're all trying to figure out the tax.
Absolutely true. Okay. Thank you. Item ten, tentative tract map minor change.
There we go. Just going to get it down.
Assistant City Manager? I am your stand-in for your Community Development Director. So tonight, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this. Track Map thirty-one, four sixty-eight was approved in two thousand and four. This had a condition of development on it that required a forty-foot curb-to-curb section from Eighth Street all the way up to Antonal. In two thousand and fourteen, the developer submitted plans and had those approved through the engineering department to, to construct a thirty-one and a half-foot curb-to-curb section with a sidewalk adjacent to that. As they went into permit issuance, we found a discrepancy between the condition of development and these approved plans, and so we asked the developer to put on a hold, let us run this through a process. We needed to remove this condition of development that was associated with the tract map. As we went through it, this is a non-typical, a forty-foot curb-to-curb is a non-typical street section. We do usually do a thirty-one and a half for a residential street with an adjacent sidewalk to it, and the developer is willing to do that. Unfortunately, if we do the curb-to-curb forty-foot section, it would require that we acquire some additional right-of-way, and as you go down towards Eighth Street, that's really not possible without taking out some homes, and we don't think that that would be anything that we would ever want to do. And so again, we can bring this back to a typical street section. In doing this, we went back and looked at your code section. There is the ability to do a minor change to that through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unfortunately, there's not a definition for a minor change section within your code, and so we felt like we wanted to bring that back to council, since you were the approving body of the forty-foot requirement. We wanted to give you the opportunity of eliminating that through determining that this was a minor change. Doing so, again, takes you back to a normal street section, does provide a sidewalk adjacent to your street section, which is a great travel path for children in the adjacent neighborhood coming to the elementary school that's, that's along Cherry Avenue, and then also gets us, again, back to that kind of normal street section. If council moves forward with approving this, we would also recommend that we bring this section of your code back to you and define a minor change in the future, so that anyone needing to go through that process isn't having to come back to council, that you would have a predetermined desire of what a minor change would look like. We did take this for expediency sake already to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because the developer is ready to move forward with this improvement. As a matter of fact, they've all done everything but really mobilized to the, to the street in order to get this improvement done. We did take it to them, made their recommendation, subject to you determining whether or not this was a minor change. They did approve that, again, subject to you making sure that this was something you felt like was a minor change. Staff would recommend moving forward with this as a minor change. We believe this is in the best interest of the community along that section. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Do I have questions from council, or do I have a motion or?
No request.
I move to approve that this is, to determine that this is a minor change and to direct staff to bring back a future amendment to clarify and define what a minor change is.
I'll second.
Counselor member Santos?
Yes.
Counselor member White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Thank you.
Item eleven, Proposition two eighteen, sewer rate study update. City manager?
Yes, ma'am. So back in October of two thousand and seventeen, the city's consultants was hired to do a rate analysis for our rate increase for the sewer plant upgrades and the salt mitigation and brown line construction, brought forward their results of their analysis with some proposed increases to the sewer rates. And so, again, they were looking at a phase in over a five-year period with the first rate increase looking at about a four percent, and then seven percent annually over the next four years of that rate analysis. And the purpose of that was to provide the ability to be able to finance debt needed to make those plant improvements. The city then discussed back in December, setting forth the Prop. two eighteen process. As we got into that process, there were some questions that were raised throughout the community about the project, and so council then voted to stop that Prop. two eighteen process until we could have a couple community hall, town hall style meetings to be able to try to present what we were talking about, try to field some additional questions that the community had. So we had two of those meetings held. One was at the end of January, one was last week in February, and we had quite a number of questions, probably estimate about thirty or so people attended through both of those meetings. We are working to put together a final list of all the questions that were asked in those meetings, either through written or through verbal questioning and the responses to that. So the draft of that is being prepared now, so we'll be presenting that to you as soon as we possibly can. The overall theme, I think, of things that we heard through those meetings were, you know, what's prompting the need for these projects? Who is paying for it? Why do existing ratepayers have to pay for it? That these rate adjustments are placing additional financial burdens on existing homeowners and residents within the community, and a concern about that becoming untenable from an affordability perspective. And then, you know, ultimately, really still, some of our common theme about, you know, all of our CFD money's gone. You know, people stole all this money from the city. You allow that to happen, and now you're trying to come back with more money, you know? Why should we have to pay? And a feeling that our citizens have paid twice for that. So, you know, we worked through to try to address, you know, the variety of those, those issues. You know, with regard to the first issue about why are we doing this? Again, there's plant upgrades and plant needs that are there to serve the existing population. Some of the components of the plant are achieving forty years of age, so they're achieving some of their livelihood, their lifespan. The other is that there's additional infrastructure we have to make to address the impacts of growth. So we've got entitled subdivisions that are out there. We've been permitting, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred to, I think this year, we, we would hit a peak of about seven hundred and fifty single-family homes permitted a year. We're bringing in, on average, about three hundred and fifty to four hundred new homes occupied into the community every year, and we've got some existing commercial developments coming up as well. So there's an impact. The city has got a responsibility, a mandate, to begin the process to expand plant capacity by the time it hits seventy-five percent capacity, which we're at that threshold now. Additionally to that, we have mandates required to meet environmental flows, which are attributable to existing development, as well as with regard to accommodating the impacts of future development as we go. So there's a combination of issues that, that come together. In looking at the rate analysis, the analysis was done to look at a way to try to mitigate the impact on the current rate pair as much as possible. So about half of the project costs that we're looking at is being borne by new development. It also anticipates, we have new connections that will come online over this five-year period, which are additional ratepayers that are going to help pick up part of that cost as we need to move forward with the plant expansion and the upgrades and the salt mitigation and the environmental flow issues that have to be addressed by mandate. And then ultimately, with regard to easing in, trying to mitigate as much, as much of that impact as possible, was looking at a tiered rate process that brings it in over a period of time. One of the questions that we had at the last meeting was a citizen who questioned, hey, is there a way for the city to look at alternative ways to set the rate process? You know, can you look at a volumetric rate based on water consumption? So one of the things I did mention is we'd definitely look into that, entertain that, and see if that was another methodology that we could look at. The problem with that is that we don't own the water system, we don't own the meters, we don't have ready access to water consumption data. Now, would the district be willing to share that information? Don't know. It's something we could explore. Now, when you do something like that, you're not talking about annualized use, you're typically looking at winter averaging, so that you're looking at the lowest period of the year for which water's being consumed. So when somebody irrigates the yard, that water typically doesn't go into the sewer system and go down. So, you know, that's, there's an offset during the high water times versus the low periods where people are not washing cars and irrigating, doing those types of things. So with that, we are looking at, taking this opportunity to do some additional detail work on the rate study with NBS. So they're re-looking at some of those rate analysis, looking at some volumetric comparators between water consumption and the sewer flows that we're seeing at our plant, and doing some additional detail work there to look at actual flow coming into the plant. And ultimately, the question for council would be about restarting a Prop. two eighteen process, and when you might entertain starting that process, if you have some ideas, if you want to wait and see what that additional rate study looks like as we, we bring some of that detailed information back. But the earliest that you're really talking about being able to start the next public hearing process really would be in May of this year, would be the absolute earliest timeline, if you really started here almost immediately on the Prop. two eighteen process. One of the things that we tried to clarify is that in the Prop. two eighteen process, there is an appeal process. So we send out notices, and if fifty percent plus one of the customers or the owners or users on the system submit a written signed letter of protest, then that stops our ability to do this rate increase, and we would have to then look at how to start over and what our next steps would be from there. So one of the things that's important is to note that we're under mandates, and these things, these maintaining and managing the sewer system, addressing this flow, these capacity issues are something that we have to do. And if we don't, there could be some very serious consequences to the community, fines, additional actions by the state, and ultimately, there could be a receivership or takeover of our system if we just are not able or willing to step up to meet these mandates. So with that, mayor, turn it back to you and council.
Thank you. Public comments?
Yes. Can I go ahead and open the time for me, please?
Yes. It, I open public comments at six forty-five.
Libby, you're removed.
You say Dr. Ball first. Dr. Ball, you go first. Go ahead. Go let Dr. Ball go first, because I'm going to yell now.
Okay. Nicole, you go in whichever order you'd like.
Okay. The first speaker I have is Libby, if you would like to.
Okay.
State law requires a bit, for you to go to vote. You can put it on the June sixth ballot legally, if you get it done by March third. So you can legally put it on the ballot, or you can keep running your scam. I guarantee the two of you, that if I have to stand by the side of the road and collect those signatures, I'll do it, but I'm going to recall the two of you at the same time and put it on the November ballot. Enough is enough. You hired these crooks, you put them in. Why are you smirking, Lloyd White? You think it's a joke?
I just know you enjoy my smirks.
That's why you do it? You don't take any of this serious.
Please direct your speech to.
The council.
No, you direct it to me. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I will talk to you.
Go right ahead.
You hired these crooks, you forged these documents, you refused to follow state law, and now you're backed into a corner. Too bad. You, you gave millions of dollars to Webb and Associates, nobody trusts you. That's the problem. Nobody trusts you because you brought in a bunch of crooks that started with your city attorney. You do what you want, but you prepare yourself, I'm going to pull you too, and you don't even count on, don't even count on getting reelected. Your mama wouldn't vote for you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Mr. Blair Ball.
Good evening, council. I attended both of these meetings, and it was quite informative for me, and I appreciate the council for providing those. One of the things that, and I've been involved with this for many, many years, longer than I care to remember, one of the things, one of my suggestions at the first meeting, and I hope that the council would be in agreement with this, is that you package all of your business for the wastewater treatment plant into one group of council agenda items. You could then, because on your agenda, you're representing the Beaumont Financing Authority, Beaumont Utility Authority, and a former RDA, as also a city council, but I would like to see the city council. and a former RDA as also a city council. But I would like to see the city council, exit the city council meeting, convene a, the wastewater treatment, Beaumont Utility Authority, and put all of your items together for that purpose, and then come back out of that and go back into city council. I think that would be a more transparent way of conducting business. Right now, you have item 11, which we're on, and then we drop down, I think, to item 18 or something, and we go back into wastewater treatment agenda items. So, putting them all together, you know, maybe around the 7 o'clock hour, whatever, prior agenda items, I think the last one was item number 27. You were here at 11 o'clock. You guys were burnt out. So, this is a $110 million project, 100 million, but Webb tacked on 10 after Councilmember White refreshed his memory. But, you know, that's the largest sum of money. Additionally, for the last four years, we have been collecting on each of our statements, $1.70 per month, going towards wastewater treatment facility upgrades. Is the council aware of how much money that is? So, by going into that Beaumont Utility Authority meeting, you can get an update on a monthly basis of how much money has accrued to those accounts. Those are restricted funds. They're not reserved. They're restricted for that project. And prior to that, prior to that, we had another rate increase. Staff, I'm sure, can give you the minutes showing that we were also setting some money aside. Now, where that money is, I'm not sure, but you need an accounting of where we stand on it. I suggested that, and staff was going to look into that. Perhaps they haven't had time to convey that to you, but I think that would be important for all the citizens to know where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
No other speakers.
Questions from council?
Sure, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You, we are going to put together, because I asked you about it as well, an accounting of where the money from the last increase, where we were at beginning of the increase in 2013, where the income, expenses, and where we are now.
Yes.
You and I have discussed it, and I'm comfortable with what you, the information you've provided me, but I think that would be useful in the next meeting.
Sure. And I think, one of the things that is important when we're looking at this is to look at that period of 2001 to 2006, where a rate study was established and the rates weren't implemented. So, there was a period of about six years or so where the sewer rate was held unchanged for a number of years. When you look at that 2006 to 2012, 2013 era, the capital dollars, which I think Dr. Ball were referring to, were not adequate to fully fund the improvements, so they were a partial element. And so, if you look at the rate analysis that was generated at the time, there was only about 4.4 million of hard cash that was actually, would have been generated towards the capital project for the sewer. And there's an additional amount that was, had been set aside. So, we'll be looking at that and kind of rolling that into assessment as well. So, I think it's important not just look at that five-year window, but you've got to go back, because these are projects that have been looked at for many years.
No, I understand. I'm just, my concern is that, I mean, we could go back 10, 15, 20 years to a point where none of us were involved, where there is no accountability to the records, the financial records that we had. What I'm concerned about is the last increase, and I think one of the reasons we slowed the process down was to make sure that the last increase in 2013 was a valid amount, a valid increase. And then, so what I'm looking for is when that decision was made by this council, by the council, to increase the rates. I remember being on the other side and asking for an accounting of why they were doing it, and we got the runaround. So, you know, we can keep going back 10, 15 years, but at this point, we know what we need to get done. What we need to do is, we need to present to the public what happened at the start, where we were at the start of the last increase, what the last increase has done, where we are now, the, you know, debt that was retired, expenses, all of that. So, I think that's important.
Sure.
That we get that out. I also do like Dr. Ball's suggestion, and I don't see a problem, and maybe you guys could look into it, but I don't see a problem. We do it with the Beaumont Finance Authority for other issues. And, you know, if you want to speak to that tonight, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
I think it's a good suggestion, and the city manager and I were chatting about it as Dr. Ball was speaking. And so, I think it's a good idea to do it.
So, let's bring it back as a consent agenda, or, I'm sorry, as an item for the agenda?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And then, one last comment. My mom lives in Banning, so she couldn't vote for me, but I'm sure she would move to Beaumont if it's necessary.
Oh, she'd pay $8,000 a year and no roof taxes?
The, um, any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I got a comment. So, I think it's necessary that, and we do have a timeline, so I concur with Councilman White to have this timeline and accountability. So, before we go forth further than anything, I have to make sure that everything is, these things that are being thrown at. I also want to ask, can you comment, Mr. Pinkney, on how this is not a tax but a fee? Because I don't remember when it has been raised, their rates that I voted. So...
Yeah. So, under the California Constitution, on the voter requirement, there is an express exemption for property-related fees, which include water services, sewer services, and also refuse services. So, there's an express exemption for that. And then, you get into the question of, well, what are, what are services comprised of? And so, the case law and the statutes have provided guidance on that, and what services include, or rates for services include, is O and M, operations and maintenance costs, also the cost of service and retired debt, the capital, the cost of capital assets, and a prudent reserve. So, that's usually what your, your rates consist of. And here, I think, the comments that were made earlier were that the capacity component, that the rates are going to be designed in a way where the new capacity that's being necessitated by new growth is not going to be paid for by the existing customers.
Thank you.
The, I have a question. The, you mentioned and made reference to the prior public meetings that we had, and there were a number of questions that were brought up by the public. Did you keep track of those questions? And at any point, are you, if we bring this back as an agenda item, could you include some summation and response as part of that, so that the continuation of the public concerns gets carried over from the last meeting to the agenda item?
Yes, ma'am. We are finishing that up, and so, as soon as that is completed, we'll get that to council. We'll post it on the website, so people can have access to it and see what those questions were and what those responses were. So, we try to keep track of all that as accurately as we could.
Any other?
Do, one last thing. We're on a timeline with compliance for this, so if, you know, to be in compliance with the water. So, if we were having to bring back a Prop 218 thing, when's the latest, not the earliest, but the latest we can do in order to get funds where we need it?
Well, we're really looking to try to secure financing for the improvements in two tranches. And so, the first tranche, your existing rates are adequate to cover the debt service. The second tranche, which are the dollars that you would need, because we're phasing the project to do the improvements to the plant first, and the plant capacity first, and then coming back with the water quality and salt mitigation secondarily. So, you can get the capacity issues addressed, and then you've got, really need to have your financing in order to be able to finance the second bond issue that you're looking at. And so, so really, you're, you're needing to try to get this set probably this summer at the latest, to try to fund the second piece of it.
Mayor, may I respond?
Sure.
No, I understand we could. I mean, we talked about before how the current rates would pay for the expansion, and we could put off the financing of the brine line. My concern with that is, I did, after we talked about that months ago, sort of polled people that I know, and if there is an increase coming, they would prefer it incrementally rather than putting off a year or two years and then jumping up. So, I would like to see the summer as being the latest. I think we should get this done before the end of the summer, if not sooner, as long as we've completed the rate study and we're comfortable with where we're headed.
Thank you. So, if there are no more questions from council, then do I have a motion to receive and file and to bring this forward as an agenda item?
I'll move to receive and file.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Before I do roll call, Mayor, could you close the public comment period, please?
Oh, I didn't close it. I'm sorry. I closed public comment at 6:58.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 12. Physical year 17, 18 general fund budget to actual analysis and mid-year budget adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am here this evening to go over our general fund mid-year analysis of the budget to actual and to bring to you some budget changes in order to have things in line for the last half of the year. I realize that the document is many pages and a lot of numbers, but it took a lot of time to go through and get the analysis at a level that we could depend on it for the last six months of the year, since we're pulling the information in, into new specific items to try and bring the information to a level where we can use it to budget going forward and have a better tracking. So, a lot of these things, it looks like there's a lot of line items. It's because there wasn't a historical reference for them, and we're moving them as we go along. The biggest line item changes are to the refuse, revenue, and cost lines. Those are calculations that needed some reworking, and so those are really the biggest numbers on both sides of the adjustment, revenue and expense. A lot of it has to do with the fee study that has changed some of our fees going forward now, and some of it is related to changes because personnel that we wanted to get in place were budgeted for the whole year, but we couldn't move that fast in getting that personnel, and therefore, our contractual services had to take up the slack. So, there's a little bit of plus and minus on that as well. Overall, the budget adjustment at this mid-year point is a minus of $199,611, but at the first quarter mark, we had a positive bottom line. The net effect, when we put it all together, we started with a zero budget net, and now we have a positive budgetary effect of $21,000. So, if you have any questions on any of the budget line items, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. I'd like to open it to public comments, if I could, please, and then call you back, Malana, if I could.
I have no request to speak on this.
All right. Sorry. Get back up again. Thank you. I expected some. The council, please. Questions? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Malana. I mean, I did mention to you about the police budget and everything. You did excellent job on this. I mean, reflecting all the adjustments need to be done, because when I review it, it's 24% really, you know, of the book. Now, you're in line on this. And my question is on the Measure A, and we're doing the budget of 17, 18. And when do you think, do you expect that to come in?
We received our first allocation of Measure A funds, so we do have our first payment now. We received it at the end of January, so that is now beginning. We thought it would start a little sooner. Timing didn't work out that way, so, but it is beginning now. So, it's starting to come through.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember White?
Just a couple. Malana, I noticed the, of course, the adding for the revenue and the expenses going up. And then, I've noticed there's a few in the parentheses that you've gone the other way with.
Right.
Is there any that you want to significantly pick out, that you want to comment on? Anything that you've had to cut back on or?
No. Mostly, it's, it's not that we're cutting back on different line items. It's more adjusting to, to take from one place to put into another, where when we do the actual expenses and the actual revenues, we're trying to get them split in a more detailed methodology. So, when they were originally budgeted, they were budgeted, some of them in a consolidated method. So, we just pull from one and get it allocated to others.
Okay. And do you see any trends that we should be significantly concerned about for the fiscal year end?
No, I don't. Not at this time. I don't see anything. Just getting everything back in line, keeping our net zero position as close to that as absolutely possible.
Okay. And then, I noticed we don't have Measure A funds yet.
Right.
What's, do we have any possibility or contingency if we're not going to get those, or will they just come in much later? How's that working on those that are waiting for?
Right. We, we have begun receiving it now. So, now, we're going to start looking at the trend and see if it's going to stay in line with how we budgeted originally. If it does, then that will be fine. If it doesn't, then we'll look at alternatives if we need to make some other adjustments along the way.
But the Measure A dollars were going into our road paving and maintenance program, so they're not affecting operations.
Right.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
First of all, I'm not surprised about the expenses, having to adjust with no historical reference. And I know a lot of the departments are in their second year, maybe, of putting together budgets and working through that. So, my biggest, my concern then would be that we, we came up with the revenues to cover those expenses. So, that's where I'm focusing, is look a little bit deeper on the revenues. Building permits, increased fee schedule, that's no surprise. We knew that was coming. So, my, I guess my bigger, biggest concern is, explain to me the corrected budget, budgeted refuse revenue collections. Why, calculations. Why did we either miss $970,000 or find $900? Explain that part to me.
The refuse calculation is two pieces. The residential is fairly straightforward. We know approximately what we're going to be building the residence. It's done every other month, along with the sewer bill, and those calculations were made, and they were fine. When it came to the commercial side, it was an error, really, on my part in doing the percentage calculation. We get a net payment from the waste management company for commercial activities. What that means is, we get the difference between what they would have built, the commercial and industrial, and what we would have kept, what we would have paid to them to provide the service. They just give us the net instead. In the accounting standards, you have to gross it up, so you have to show the total gross of what the revenue would have been if we'd have built it, and then how much the expense would have been if we'd have had to pay for the service. The net result should be the same. My calculations, I didn't do them correctly, and I recognized that right after we finished the budget and had gotten it through council. But at that time, I knew I wasn't going to be able to really address it. So, I knew at mid-year, that was something I was going to have to recalculate and figure out.
Okay. And have you, has this been to the Finance and Audit Committee yet, or was the timing that it came here first?
They did see it. They saw it in a draft format. I didn't have all the finalized numbers nailed down, but they did see a draft of this. It hasn't changed dramatically. There's a few things that we have shifted to make them more realistic, more in line with what we expect the last half of the year to be. But the Finance Committee did review it.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Malana, the, if we get the Measure A funds, will we be able to apply that to the slurry seals, so that that's not taken out of the general fund?
Yes.
Capital projects fund, rather.
Right. That's one thing. In order to, to have that project move forward at this time, we're looking at using part of the council contingency. As the Measure A comes in and as it, as it follows the budget that we expect it to, then we should be able to, to put that back.
And, and we're looking at the CIP right now also, so we'll be coming back with And we're looking at the CIP right now also, so we'll be coming back with the CIP adjustment at... We have a deferral a little bit later on, but because we're in the process of taking these revised revenue numbers, looking at the revised schedule in the Measure A and reevaluating that project schedule, so we can look at that. So, the concern would be, to me, is that are we over-obligating ourselves financially on the sales tax revenues that may not materialize? And so, we've got them programmed through the CIP. If the dollars don't come in, then we don't go out to bid. We don't try to do the projects until you actually have the cash on hand. And we would then need to adjust our capital plan further to reflect that.
Thank you. And then on... I have a question on the parks for the $399,000 increase in costs. What was behind having to jump that up like that?
Part of that is the utility cost, the cost of water where they had...
So, is it a rate or quantity or both?
Both.
All right.
It's a both for this year.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions from council? Do I have a motion to approve the mid-year budget adjustments?
I'll move to approve the mid-year budget adjustments.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 13. Continuance of the public hearing for the revisions to the improved city's fiscal year 1718 capital improvement plan to reallocate available funds.
Of course, this is a continuation. We had opened a public hearing and are continuing the public hearing from our last meeting.
Okay. We need a time.
So, this would be a continuation.
All right. Thank you. I will open the public hearing at 7:10. Do we have requests to speak?
No. No request to speak on this item.
I will...
Continue.
Close the public hearing?
Don't close it. Continue.
At 7:11 and continue it to the March 6, 2018. So, I can't close it. I have to leave it open.
Please don't close.
I apologize. So, I do not close it, but I'll continue it to the March 6, 2018 city council meeting.
And we are finalizing our financial details, so we've been going back and we've been re-looking in great detail at every single one of our programmed items on the CIPs. Again, remember, we had put those CIPs together pretty quickly in response to the need to get those submitted to WRCOG and RCTC for the Measure A and the SB1 programs. So, as we're looking at actual cash flows in terms of SB1, sales tax dollars coming, hopefully not being repealed, also looking at Measure A dollars when they're actually starting to come in and sequencing that. So, if the dollars aren't here, then there's projects we're going to come back to and say, hey, we need to push those out and reschedule. In addition to that, this refined detail will be used and presented back to our CIP Citizens Committee, who have been very patient with us as we've taken a little extra time from what we anticipated, but we're trying to get them that detailed information as well, so they can look at that and add additional programming that they wanted to consider and look at some additional funding options for projects for which there's no funding at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 14.
Mayor, we do have to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Oh, we didn't do the motion. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to March 6, 2018. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 14. Service agreement between the County of Riverside and the City of Beaumont for Brookside Avenue slurry seal improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Mayor, before we begin the staff report, I'd like to ask the city attorney to advise my home backs up to Brookside and advise what my obligations are as far as recusing myself for this item before discussion begins.
So, there is a specific exemption in the California Code of Regulations, which interpret the Political Reform Act, that deal with situations like that where you own a piece of property and there's a decision that comes before the council that affects an issue within 500 feet of your home. And the exception deals with a situation where the issue before you solely concerns repairs, replacement, or maintenance of existing streets, water, sewer, storm drainage, or similar facilities. So, this would fall within that exemption.
Thank you.
All right. And, city attorney, you and I spoke about this and you advised me of that, so it does not... I'm not at a conflict point with this also. I live off Brookside, correct?
Right. My understanding is your home is right next to Brookside, and that Brookside, I also understand, runs almost the length of the town.
Yes.
Okay. But there is a specific exemption for improvements or replacement of existing streets, and this is a slurry on an existing street. So, it would fall in that exemption.
Mr. Hussein.
I'm presenting this item on behalf of Public Works Director, who couldn't be here tonight due to health reasons. So, county has a project that included certain street improvements on Brookside Avenue that include crack seal, slurry seal type 2, and some ADA improvements to existing curb ramps. They reached us... They reached out to us and with collaboration, we are presenting this item before you to approve to do these improvements. The cost to do these improvements is $115,380. That include their overhead cost and inspection cost as well. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
No request to speak on this item.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Just more of a comment or clarification. Brookside is the northern border for the City of Beaumont, so half from the center line up south is Beaumont and the center line north is the county.
Correct. So, they had the project to do the improvements on county side and in good... They approached us to see if city wanted to participate, and we decided to participate for cost-saving purposes. So, that will save us mobilization and other costs that if we were to do these improvements on our own, we'll have to burden those, so...
Okay. I mean, and it's clear when you drive down Brookside, because the north side has been repaired more recently than the city side.
So, this is the remaining portion. They did do a portion close to the freeway and at that time, we didn't get the opportunities to participate. And if you do half of that, it just doesn't look and, you know, and it will extend the life of the pavement. So, if you do half, our half will contribute, you know, damages to their side.
And so, on Brookside, it's going to go from... Do you know from where to what?
There's a map.
Maybe how long?
Um...
Because I thought it stopped at Union?
Yeah.
There's two portions, yes.
It says to Union. So, none of the... There's very bad flooding on Brookside. So, will any of this have any impact on the flooded areas?
Unfortunately, no.
It's going to keep flooding, but it will be very well slurried in some areas, right?
So, yes. So, county do have some flood control budget items that we can talk to them in future for those.
We're impacted more than the county because it's our crews that have to go out and put up all the warnings and then take care of it, and so...
Flood control do ask us for their input, our input for projects that come, you know, that need... So, we can certainly ask them for the next fiscal year.
All right. Other questions from council? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move item number 14 to approve the cooperative agreement between the County of Riverside and City of Beaumont for Brookside Avenue's slurry seal improvements and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement in the amount not to exceed $115,380.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor, could we take a break now?
Sure. We'll take a... How long do you need? 10 minutes? 10-minute break. So, it is 7:18. We'll get back together at 7:28. Thank you. Item 15. Authorized payment for right-of-way acquisition to ASM and Hall for the State Road 60, Petrero Boulevard interchange, project phase one of the project.
Good evening again. Before you present this staff report on behalf of the Public Works Director again, to authorize payment of right-of-way acquisition to Carman Hall and ASM Beaumont Investor LLC for construction of State Route 60 and Petrero interchange. As you know, the project has been awarded and the groundbreaking ceremony was a couple weeks ago. So, city has currently executed possession and use agreement that is signed by both parties and the city. Part of the condition of the agreement is to pay these right-of-way acquisition costs. And so, staff recommends to authorize payment for these... For the right-of-way acquisition to Carman Hall in the amount not to exceed $24,990 and ASM in the amount not to exceed $873,795,000, subject to seller agreement to these amounts for the Petrero and State Route 60 interchange project.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. I can answer any question you have.
Thank you. Do I have public comments?
No, not on this item.
All right. Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Santos?
Just a quick comment.
We don't have public comments, right?
We do not.
Okay.
I just want to comment that I appreciate when you're having expenses like this, that you're referring it back to the project table. This way, we can follow it and make sure that everything matches and nothing's new and numbers match. I just wanted to comment on that. Appreciate that.
No, I'll make a motion if no one else...
All right.
I won't do any. I move to authorize payment for right-of-way acquisition to ASM and Hall for the SR60 Petrero Boulevard interchange, project phase one.
And is that subject to the conditions that were given in the staff report?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Approve, I want the amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Utility Partners LLC for wastewater treatment plant operation and maintenance in the amount of $708,099, including annual CPI adjustment of 3.1% and two, continue biosolids hauling at the rate of $48 per ton with Utility Partners LLC. Mr. Hussein.
Mayor, on May 16, staff went and solicited RFP and received three proposals from listed from Utility Partners Perquader and Veola. On March 7, 2017, council approved the award of professional services agreement to Utility Partners for the... For five years, subject to council approval for each year extension. So, this is part of that. We're presenting this in front of you for approval to amend professional services agreement with Utility Partners for additional year with the CPI adjustment, which is part of the original agreement, section 1.05 of the attachment A of the agreement. Staff is also recommending to approve, to continue the solid biosolid hauling for $48 per ton.
Thank you.
And they've been performing very satisfactorily the O&M services for the wastewater treatment plant for the last year. I can answer any questions you may have. And we do have a presentation of staff member from Utility Partners here to answer any question.
Thank you very much. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hussein.
You open.
I will open public comment at 7:34.
Libby, you're removing it.
This is the invoice for Urban Logic Services. What is Urban Logic Services? It is an offshoot of Urban Logic Consultants. See Aquarian? Urban Logic Services, starting an offshoot called Aquarian. The first time, they were run out of the sewer plant for stealing all the money. Then, they changed it to Utility Partners when they got caught stealing all the money the second time, about 10 years ago. Get it? Urban Logic, Aquarian, Aquarian Utility Partners. You are continuing the same scams. Do not ever say you did not know, were unaware, you were doing something different. It's new faces. No, it's not. You are still continuing the same scams, the same dirty crooks. You just hired a parade of people. Why you need Utility Partners? What about those dozen people that now work in Public Works? The theory was, you would fire these crooks as soon as you hired a public works director and then an assistant public works director and then an assistant, 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 a public works director. And you still are running the same scam. Don't ever say you did not know, were unaware, didn't do it. You're doing it right now.
Thank you.
No other speakers.
Okay. I will close the public comment at 7:35. Discussion and questions among council?
Questions?
Yes. Councilmember Martinez?
So, how does the CPI adjustment work? Who brings that initiates that process? Is that Utility Partners or us or, I mean, did we see this coming? Is what I'm asking.
It's the cost... I mean, the cap...
Yeah, I know what it is. Just saying, is that something?
They asked for it.
Okay.
And based on the Bureau and Labor statistic, they are following that index.
Right. And they're entitled to that. But my question is, when we're getting the bids, do we... I mean, we just took into account that whoever we hired, we're going to need a CPI.
That's perspective agreement that you currently have in place.
Okay. So, really, they're having a $708,000 contract versus the lowest bid when we put it out with $878. So, we're still under. We're still under the lowest bid, so that's good. Thank goodness. But I was just wondering how that works, because it kind of made it sound like, okay, here's our low bid and all of a sudden, we want this and here's the actual bid. I just was a little uncomfortable with that, but okay. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know that. I was just... I didn't know.
And part of this is because we require them to have two grade five operators at land, so they do have an ample amount of staff there to, you know, run day-to-day operations there.
And question, Mr. Councilmember... Councilmember White?
Yeah, I do. So, I think what Mr. Martinez was saying, the agreement, section 1.05 and the attachment to the original contract. The original contract was a year ago, correct?
Yeah, and that attachment was part of that as...
Okay.
It was the attachment to that original.
And that's... I'm assuming, Mr. Pinkney, that's a similar standard clause in these types of contracts. So, if we had taken the second bidder or the third bidder, they would have probably had the CPI adjustment as well?
It's a negotiable item.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't have to be in a contract. It's something that's negotiated between the parties.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not a mandatory provision for that area.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me repeat that because I didn't have a microphone in front of me. So it's not, the CPI provision, while found in many contracts, is not a mandatory provision. It's a, it's an item of negotiation. You know, you're not required to have it. Not every contract has it. But it is, over a contract that extends more than one year, it is not uncommon because the concept is to account for inflation. So.
Okay. And we're not at all considering the contract today. We're just considering amending the budget to fit the earlier contract, correct?
And we are extending the contract for additional year.
I thought we already did.
That's the $700,000.
So because the current contract will expire on March seventh.
But we had.
So that's item two.
Yes.
Where it says to continue biosolids hauling at the rate.
No, no, amendment one is.
And that's the extension?
That's the extension.
Okay.
Your existing contract was for one year and then it could be extended, annual extensions, subject to approval by the council. So now it's coming back to you to extend it.
So both of these things would get continued for another year?
That's correct. And there's termination provision at any time we can, that's in there for whatever reason city decides.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, but we already went out to RFP.
Yes, we did.
And we picked them at the six eighty-six oh eight, eight oh eight that we originally put them down for. So we're just adding their CPI from their contract into that to bring it to seven oh eight.
That's correct.
If we were to go out and go out to RFP again, then they would not, and we decided we didn't get a better offer, they would not be required to honor and extend this forward, correct?
No. You've got termination, you've got termination on this contract.
I do think that's a valid point, though. And I don't know how that is added to the review process for the lowest bidder. But I think if one bid has an amount and then there's an indicator in there that they can elevate it based on the CPI, I think that when we're looking at the RFPs, we should make sure that we include whatever that projected amount is so that we understand that over a period of time that the cost of one may go up more than the other when it's that close. And I don't recall what it was, whether there were other ones had CPI indicator in it or not. But I think it's, it's valid because when we go back now and look, we'd have to go research the whole thing. And if we just made it a practice to make sure that we always looked at whether there was a indicator to increase the amount at the time of review, that would be a better time to do it. So with that.
One more question.
Yeah?
Mr. Pinkney, we made ordinance regarding professional services contracts and at that time, we said that we would authorize them for a year. Can you refer where that applies in this?
So the, the agreement is for one year, subject to it coming back to you. And the idea was that you didn't want to have contracts that were going on, you know, for lengthy periods of time without them being renewed or extended by you. And so the contract is technically for one year, subject to you renewing it, extending it. And that's, it's before you now to extend it for a year. And the, under the terms of the agreement, it could be extended this time and then up to two further one-year extensions. But they would come back to you each year for consideration. And that's sort of how these contracts have been working is, under the new ordinance, is they've been coming back to you for approval on a, on an annual basis. So that's, that's what this is, basically. And the original contract did have a CPI adjustment if it was extended in it.
But the original contract was already approved, so there's really not much we can do at this point because we've already.
No, you're extending it.
I think we're extending it. So I think we could send it back out to RFP and I'm comfortable with doing that if there's a consensus up here.
I don't mind. Now, because see, my concern was the numbers. Because now that I see seven oh eight, that's a little different to me, being only 169,000 off of the other bid. I don't know again if it had that indicator in it or not, but, you know.
Well, during the period of time when we reviewed this for the first year, we went out to bid. It was a time when we did not want to extend anything beyond a year. And I think at the time, we anticipated that we might be looking at it again in a year. So there's, I see nothing wrong with deciding to do it.
Let me, let me help out. So you did, you did go out, you have a contract, you did go out to RFP, you did get competing bids. You're not required to go out to RFP every year. And you did factor in the contract, the concept that if you renewed it, that there was going to be an increase potentially in the cost of living. And so there was a provision included in the contract to provide for that. So in theory, with a CPI, you're paying the same amount adjusted for inflation year to year. So does that help? I mean, you guys have gone through the competitive process.
No, I understand. And at the risk of agreeing with Ms. Yurimovik, I was uncomfortable with continuing the business with Utility. I know if you guys remember when we had this discussion a year ago, I was, you know, I continued to get reassurance from staff that they were doing a great job and we should keep them. And I have not been comfortable because I was well aware of what Ms. Yurimovik brought us up today. And I was not comfortable with that linkage back to Urban Logic. So I know I raised this when we went, when we reviewed this a year ago. At least I discussed it because it was a concern for me. And so, you know, I'm, I'd like to go, I'd like to put this out to bid. If they come back in with taking away the CPI and they're still the lowest bid, then I'll have to struggle again with, with assurance from staff that they, that that is the right choice to make. But I'd be more than, I'd like to, I'm not going to make a motion to approve the amendment here.
So. So let me, let me, let me just weigh in on this. You, the current contract expires in March. And so there probably, I don't know if there's enough time to go through an entire RFP process within that, within that time period. But you can't, you know, one option to consider if you want to go back out to RFP is to, the contract would allow you to extend it for a year. That's what's before you and then go through an RFP process if you want to test the marketplace. But the contract also provides, the contract also provides, excuse me. The contract also provides at, at section ten, that the city, at its sole option, may terminate this agreement with or without cause or for no cause at any time by giving 120 days written notice to the contractor. So you could extend the contract for a year, go through an RFP process, and then if you decide to go in a different direction, you have the ability to terminate the contract 120 days' notice. So that you're not, so that you're not put in a position where you don't have anybody to operate.
So if we go out to RFP now and we can do RFP in 120 days, do we have to give the 120-day termination notice at this point? I mean, are you saying that if we go out to RFP and the RFP takes sixty, 100, or ninety, 120 days, that Utilities Partner is not required to honor the contract past the contract end date?
The current contract terminates on March, no, I'm sorry, February twenty-eighth. February twenty-eighth. So there's not enough time to go out to RFP. So, you know, what I would suggest, if you want to go out to RFP, is extend it a year. And then you can, if you decide that you want to go in a different direction, you have the provision in the agreement that allows you to terminate the agreement on 120 days' notice.
So we can go to RFP, we go through the process. If we decide to pick a different, or even if we stay with Utility Partners and we have a new contract, we can, I'm sorry, if we go a different way, like you say, then we can give the 120 days termination.
Right.
Well, and I think one of the things that's important is that we're about to go out to advertising for the lead and then the two field crew that we have in the utility budget. Again, keep in mind that this is a utility fund operation. So Public Works Staff Fund and the General Fund don't work on the utility fund side. Plus, this is a specialization that requires permits and qualifications to be able to work and operate this sort of system. So you can't just take somebody from another department and plug them in if they're not qualified to do the work. So we have a continuation of service to look at. We've also got the staffing that we're looking to bring in. And so there's a transition process we have to look at in that as well, so.
It does require special permitting, I mean, certification from the board. And you'd have to have a certain level of staff that has certain certification to run the plant. There's reporting that is reported to the board on daily, monthly and annually basis.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll move to approve the amendment, number one, to the professional services agreement with Utility Partners LLC for the wastewater treatment plant operations and maintenance in the amount of $708,099, including the annual CPI adjustment of 3.1%. I'll also make a motion, part of the motion is to authorize to continue the biosolids hauling at the rate of 48 per ton with Utility Partners. And I'd like to add to the motion that staff will bring in, do an analysis on, on an in-staff solution.
Yes.
And bring back an RFP for us to approve.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Item seventeen. Ratify the policies and procedures manual relating to the accounting of bond proceeds and record-keeping in accordance with the SEC order.
Good evening again. I have before you this evening the policies and procedures manual related to the accounting of bond proceeds and record-keeping that we have implemented in the Finance Department and citywide that we need or are asking for council to ratify. This is one of the steps that's in accordance with the SEC order for the city to be in compliance.
Thank you. Do we have public comment?
Yes.
I will open the public comments at seven fifty.
Libby Yurimovik?
Where's it at? There is no report attached. I requested a hard copy. Where's the report that you paid thousands of dollars to from the lawyers? It wouldn't be just a, something written down on a piece of paper. It would be signed by the lawyers, it would have their letterhead and it would be addressed to the SEC. None of you looked for it? You didn't even bother to, oh, open the agenda, oh, well, oh, it don't matter. Nobody even looked. What'd your lawyer tell you on your SEC compliance? You can pretend you're stupid, but it doesn't matter. If you approve it, you're liable. If your lawyers lie to you, it doesn't matter, you're liable. If your council lies to you, it doesn't matter, you're liable. If your manager lies to you, it doesn't matter, you're liable.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No other comments.
Okay. I will close public comments at seven fifty-three.
I think something that needs to be clarified is that this is a policies and procedures manual relating to the accounting of bond proceeds and record-keeping in accordance with the order. And the document has an attachment, which is the policy that this agenda bill staff report is referring. So it is all here and complete.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember White?
To add to that, Mr. Ford, and this is, I thought Malana said that this was one of the steps towards getting that report. Okay, and that's why I was looking to see if, whether or not anyone else in the audience was paying attention. But let me, so here's my question with, my concern with this. Yeah, I looked at this and it does address all of what, a lot of what we learned in the training workshop. But there is something that I think was, it was surprising to me as well, I'm sure it was to others. Yes, I understand that it's my responsibility that when I vote on things that I, I know what I'm voting on. But I don't see any, I'd like to see a little more direction in this that says, you know, something to, to the point of these documents, when these bond documents come to us, sometimes they're fifty, sixty, hundreds of pages. And we are required, we've learned from the training, to know what's in every page. So I think that there needs to be a step, especially for future council members, to know that they have to personally somehow sign off, approve, check, whatever, that they have read those pages and they understand what they're voting on. And I don't really see that in here. I see a reference to the fact that council members are supposed to know and responsible for what, what they, what they approve. But I can, I can tell you that, well, I just think it's something that we need.
Yes.
A little more direction in the policy that, maybe a whole section on city council members.
Right. This particular section is just the accounting of the bond proceeds and then the expenditures of such. We also have other policies and procedures that council had already ratified and put in place over a year ago that had more of that kind of detail in it. We're also working on some other steps that will simplify the process and make sure that everyone knows what their roles are in, in a format that'll be easy to follow. And we also intend to, to pay strict adherence to the SEC request that we have continuing education. So not only to the finance staff and to the management of the city, but also for members of city council, whether they still be a city councilman that's been sitting for some time or if we have new ones, the continuing education is going to be a key component. And we will definitely take that into consideration moving forward.
No, I understand that. And I've, I know we passed other policies, procedures. This is the first one that's specific to bond proceeds and passing bond, approving bond measures. And I can, I just don't know that every city council member in the future who sits through a training program that is hard to sit through because of the subject matter is going to take it upon themselves to, to actually do what they're supposed to do as far as the training goes. And I think just that last step that says, you know, you, you take these training courses online at work all the time where you have to click and say, okay, I understand that, I understand that. I mean, it'd be great if we had a program like this, like that for this. But I think just something with a little more accountability to council members in this bond proceeds policy is what, is what I'd like to see.
Okay. Well, we are still working on some other documents that will, in the future, then be with the bond documents themselves that, that outlines what each member of management's responsible for, like in a checklist-type of fashion. That is going to be part of it as well. This is just the, the step for the policy.
You're telling me managers and management. And, and I'm. You're telling me managers and management, and I'm
And that includes council, yes. Anyone that has a management-type oversight over the bond directive, the bond documents, anything that relates to the bonds themselves.
Okay. I still would like to see.
I'd like to add a thought to that. I agree. I agree with what Councilmember White said. And I'd even like to expand on that. What we've done is we've had workshops for so many things. And sometimes we have more than one workshop for a subject matter. And bonds in the city of Beaumont have been such an issue. And whoever's on council is going to change. And you can't always get the same commitment from every person who's on council to put whatever amount of time they need to put in it for what they need to understand in order to be able to be making a proper judgment on what the action should be. So I think in terms of procedure and policy, it would be good if we're doing action on bonds to not put it in a regular council meeting, but to do a special meeting or a workshop where we can just discuss that. Because then you have a better chance of distributing the discussion and the knowledge and doing some more quality control over what everybody gets to hear and discuss on bond issue. And, you know, maybe we don't do it, maybe it's not needed for everyone. But it's that kind of interactive discussion that really is needed to make sure that everything is understood that's in that bond. So I agree with you. And I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but I do think it should be elevated above what it has been in the past.
Okay. We can, I mean, this is, we ratify this. We are always able to edit, add, expand. And we can go back through and look at more language to make things more clear, to outline better at each level of oversight what's expected and what the requirements are at that level. We can do that.
I just think more open discussion. And we can't, you know, because of Brown Act, et cetera, we can't really do that much discussion with each other to support anything that we've done to read into it and study it. So we have to do it in an open way. And I think doing it in an open way actually cross-pollinates the questions and the answers and more in-depth. So I think that that's a good way to do it.
Right. And any particular bond issue that's going to be considered would always come through with a lot of meetings, discussion, workshops. I mean, that would automatically just be a part of the whole process itself. But we can definitely revisit and refine the procedures.
And we have, you know, if I go back in time quite a bit, that wasn't the way it was done.
Correct.
They were stuffed into a council meeting, and everything else was wrapped around it, and they had to deal with it. And, you know, and we've improved the discussion, but I think there's more that can be done.
Well, I guess for clarification, because I'm not clear on items or elements particularly that council may be concerned about. Are you talking about looking at the debt payment schedule? Looking at the callable types of provisions? Looking at your tick rate? Looking at your discount rates, your coupon rates? Are those all the types of things that you're talking about?
Well, you know, where I'm going, I sort of disagree, differ with the mayor on this one. I think we have the opportunity to discuss these in full in a regular council meeting. I don't know that we need to do a workshop for each one. But if you look at this section called trustee notification, I think a section that says council notification and the issues you just brought up. Have you reviewed the schedule? Have you, yes, I've checked. I've reviewed the schedule. Have you looked at the tick rate? What's a tick rate? You know, those kinds of things. I just, I just want to see more structure for what a council member has to do. Because then you don't get a council member that says, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not, I trusted my city manager. I trusted my city attorney. I trusted staff. It's different when you're checking a couple of boxes and then putting your signature on it. You know, you have accountability for what you just voted on. And I don't think we need to do this on every financial issue that faces us. But the CFDs and the bonds have been such a huge issue for our city that I think, I don't see, I don't see where that would detract from what this policy is trying to do.
So the policy that you're looking at, the expansion of detail, is prior to the issuance of debt? Because this section really is just the project cost where we say, okay, we have the bond proceeds. Now we need to account for the reimbursements we're making. So you're talking about prior to the actual issuance, more the checklist idea that we're actually working on already.
Okay, so you are already, we have not seen that one.
No, you have not.
And that will be completed before the report is processed by our consultant?
The checklist is more of an internal process to make sure that we haven't missed any steps. The steps themselves are outlined in all of the different policies and procedures, just not in a simplified format where we can go tick, tick, tick. So we're working on taking all those steps and making a simplified format for us to use on an internal basis for council and for staff.
And I'm trying to get this memorialized in the document.
Right, right.
That is going to be part of what the consultant looks at and says, yes, SEC, I'm good with what they're doing here. I know we don't need it. We may not need it at that point, but I think we should have it at that point.
I think from a policy perspective, having bond counsel come at the very earliest stages of the debt issuance process, walk through those various elements, and have council acknowledge that they understand, that they've received and understand that information would be a good first step. And then, once you've got out to bid and you've secured those bond bids, then they can present back to council and say, hey, here are the elements that we discussed. Here is, you know, what has been proposed in this bid. So before you authorize it and sell it, we understand what those elements are. Those were elements germane to the bid. Here's the final bid tally. Here's how those match up. And then one of the things that As Taylor's alluding to is the fact that we'll be developing a series of schedules that will include reminders that the finance director and city manager have got responsibility for to make sure, the annual reporting, that all the other elements that go into all the body of these policies are being implemented. And those are things that will be available to council. They'll also be, you know, part of our website so that everybody understands what our application or what our reporting deadlines are, what all those things are required as we move forward. So, you know, the intent is to make sure that everybody who is subject to a debt service payment or a special assessment has a clear understanding, hey, these are the things that are supposed to be followed, and are they being followed? When we look at providing our OSs, you know, do they have the right information that allows the bondholders, the investors, and the residents an understanding about, hey, are there any substantial changes that have occurred, you know, in the financial documents that were originally sold as those investors invested in the product?
And my concern is not the detail that needs to be added based on what Councilmember White asked for in it. And I think that that detail would be excellent to clarify and build this further. But I also think that we need to respect the time and realize that when we do this, if we're doing bonds in the future, then we have time for plenty of people from the public who want to come speak because there may be more than there usually is. When we have bond counsel, we have plenty of time to go through all of the questions that may come up because we've heightened our awareness of what it is that we have to understand about every single phase that we go through to make sure everything is done correctly. So for me, it was more of a time thing. I wanted to make sure that there was enough time to go ahead and ask the questions, hear all the public comments, take it a bit more slowly. Eventually, we may be able to speed it up a little bit again as everyone gets more familiar with making sure that we've got a heightened awareness on what it is that we need to know, what we need to ask, and make sure we do a better job of it. But I just wanted to make sure that we considered that there needs to be an expanded venue for it rather than to have it just come up in the middle of a heavy council meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good?
Questions? Do I have a motion to ratify the attached policy? With the expansion of detail that was requested by Councilmember White?
I would like to see it before I approve it.
Okay. So do you want it to come back to council?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to continue?
We need to get this approved to comply with the cease and desist order from the SEC. And then if additional items are needed to be brought back to you, they can do that. But we need to get this approved.
So do you, do we give direction to add that in?
The, there's, there's two, there's two issues, I think, that we're kind of cross-firing here a little bit. These are SEC compliance issues pursuant to the order that are specifically pursuant to the land-secured financing. I think what we're talking about is a broader policy on all debt issuances, whether it's through the BFA or through the city or through the Beaumont Utility Authority. So I think that we've talked about internally about taking these specific policies and also expanding those out to apply to all bond programs. So we're specifically looking at the land-secured stuff. So I think there's a whole nother body of work we need to come back and really begin to expand those into all debt issuance programs of the city moving forward because we're going to have to look at some of that. I mean, you know, we've talked about utility bonds that may need to be issued, you know, for indoor sewer plant improvements. And so there's some other actions along, you know, the debt line that is going to have to be considered at some point.
So the final product has to be approved by us anyway, correct?
We would want to bring everything back to y'all for
At that point, if it's not in there, what you wanted, it's going to be approved. So I guess we can look at it that way. What is your timeframe on this being completed as far as the meeting the SEC order?
Really, it's
I mean, we had a number of days as a deadline. Where are we on that?
Today.
Yeah, so
February 20th.
Reports have been drafted and have been submitted back to the SEC
Okay.
Already. This initial policy, which was, I directed that to be included with the pack. It has been included and submitted to the SEC with the knowledge that this was going to be considered tonight by council.
Right.
So.
So what's our new motion?
We need a motion.
Where are we at? All right, well, so we can move on here.
I'll move to ratify the attached policy.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 18. Westside Fire Station Architectural and Engineering Services Request for Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On October 2017, the council authorized staff to publish an RFP for the Westside Fire Station A&E Services, who are really the architectural and design and engineering for that fire station. So on November 16th, staff reviewed 15 proposals received by the city. Upon review of those proposals, it was determined that staff, that it would be in the best interest of the city to reject all bids and re-advertise for A&E Services. As set forth in the RFP, the city has reserved the right to reject any and all proposals for, with or without cost. In the event the city council formally rejects these proposals and authorize re-advertising of the RFP, staff will take an opportunity to add these additional details that came up during the solicitation process about the design project into the new RFP. And we've already taken drastic steps to improve the new RFP as well as add additional details. And our counterparts at CalFire are currently reviewing our draft before we go and advertise it. So staff does recommend that city council reject all bids for the Westside Fire Station Architectural and Engineering Services Request for Proposal and authorize the re-advertising for proposals. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have requests to speak?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. I will, do we have questions from council?
Well, it really doesn't say much. So do you want to expand on any of the details or what's up? Or, I mean
Without going into like a
Right.
full hour-long presentation on it, there, we originally advertised the contract with a range of square footage for the fire station. We weren't quite sure exactly how many bays. We weren't sure if the bay needed to be too deep or wide. And then we talked about ancillary features in terms of the engineering. So we weren't sure if we were going to add geotechnical or topographical surveys into the RFP, or we were going to go out and do those functions as staff, or if we were going to have another proposal out for those ancillary functions as it relates to the design and the architectural features as well as the engineering and the structural for the fire stations. So then, by the time we got to the end of the RFP, we kind of had all those things nailed down. And it turned out that we probably felt more inclined to re-advertise it with those particulars in the RFP as opposed to asking firms to really give us a solid proposal on what they can and cannot do, as well as prices on ranges. So we didn't really feel that comfortable with that.
Okay, so I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle. So what's your timeline now for re-advertising?
Probably next week if CalFire looks back at everything. We've done everything we can to put the details in there, and we're just waiting for them to review it. And hopefully, everything looks okay. I envision maybe minor changes, and then we'll go ahead and re-advertise.
All right, thank you.
Question? I'll make a motion to reject all bids for the Westside Fire Station Architectural and Engineering Services Request for Proposal and authorize re-advertising for proposals.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 19.
Since this considers, is considering reimbursement to me, I'm going to recuse myself.
This is a request for reimbursement of travel expenses to Councilmember White for attending the ERIC meeting in the amount of $44.69. I make a motion to approve the reimbursement.
I second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 20.
Madam Mayor, this matter involves my law firm and its invoice, and so I'm going to recuse myself for that reason.
Item 20, approval of city attorney invoices in the amount of
I move to approve the invoices for the month of January.
I move to approve the invoices for the month of January 2018 in the amount of $49,355.32. I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Item 21, Legislative Updates, Discussion, and Direction. Do we have any updates or discussion?
Not me.
I have some. Do you want to go ahead? Do you have some?
Well, I was going to really kind of refresh everybody with regard to the information that I sent out on some key issues, you know, pursuant to the League of Cities. And so, again, that's Prop 68, which is looking at the $4 billion bond sale that the state is contemplating. That's also, I think, references SB 5. The proposal for that $4 billion really is in a series of competitive grants that the state could be utilized for park improvements, for environmental improvements, for water system, utility system improvements. Don't know if council wanted to take a position on that particular bill. I will say, you know, one of the things that I thought was most interesting for us was really looking at the parks and the utility side. But on the parks, for example, only $725 million statewide is available for parks. And so, it's about a comparable amount, if I remember correctly, on the, on the utility side. So, it's not a huge amount. I mean, it's a massive program and bond that the state's looking at, but in terms of the dollars actually being allocated on a statewide basis, it's not a lot of dollars. It would go to those various issues. It's pretty aggressive. You've got Prop 69 and the repeal of SB 1, you know, which are two additional bills that are out there. You know, we'll say that with regard to SB 1, that the projections had the city receiving about $10 million of SB 1 over the first 10-year period. And so, if those dollars go away, there will be an effect on the CIP. Those were being specifically slated towards roadway capital projects. So, again, on that repeal issue, not sure if that's something that council wanted to discuss and, and take a stance on. And then, you've got SB 827. And SB 827 provides very curtailed limits on cities' abilities to be able to establish criteria for residential projects. One of the key issues with that particular bill is that it equates density of housing to affordable housing without any plausible linkage between the two. For example, density and height are two things that the cities would not be able to regulate should that go into effect, which is a pretty daunting limitation for cities as we look at trying to manage growth. So, anyway, so those were really three key pieces of legislation that I was just going to, again, just mention very briefly to see if y'all had a position on any of those and if there's any action you would like us to try to take on.
Well, I'd like to research those and then discuss at the next meeting.
Agreed.
Sure.
The League of Cities had a conference call where these issues were discussed, and I believe they're bringing an update and a summary of all of these issues to the next League of Cities meeting. So, it will be brought. That was determined at the end of the conference call. I attended the conference call. And the, I don't remember which connection it was, but there was also the JPA one where there's also another piece that's actually just moving through in title only, I believe, now at this particular point. But it's for joint power authorities to, for cities to be on the hook for the pension liabilities of joint power authorities, any JPA that they are a part of, which would have a huge impact on the cities and on the joint powers. So, that will be part of the summary also. So, all of the ones that the city manager mentioned and that will be brought to the League of Cities meeting and will be reviewed in summary. Okay, council reports? Councilmember Santos?
Actually, I don't have, you know, a report on that. But like I was saying, that I really sorry that I missed the police department, you know, activities on, on the event last Saturday. It really conflict on my, on my schedule and that. But next time, I will be there. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
Uh, nothing to report.
Councilmember Martinez?
We attend the EDC meeting, and I believe we have a report coming up on that, so.
Okay. The, I did attend the volunteer recognition dinner on Saturday night. The room was filled. They're a very supportive group of each other. It was, the camaraderie was really obvious. It was a very nice dinner. One of the things that the chief got up and spoke, and he basically told them that they have, in essence, with their 7,000-plus volunteer hours, contributed enough time to save to the time of two police officers. So, in essence, it saved the city $325,000 a year for these volunteers. They're a lovely group. It was a nice dinner. With that much savings, you should give them a dinner every month. And, and, and they were, there were, I spoke to many of them. There were, many of them were averaging pretty much, when I went from one to another, 10 years of volunteer work. So, these are your fellow citizens who put in 10 years of time. And they shared with me that it's not always fun. People don't always like to see them show up, but they had a great attitude. And I was pleased to give a very, very, very short speech to them and to meet them. So, it was a lovely dinner. Thank you for doing it. And thank you for having such a good relationship with them. That's it. Economic Development Update?
And this will become, this is an addition to this particular agenda, but this will become a standard monthly report that we receive or submit to you.
So, because it's a new item, I'm going to go at a couple meetings old on what they've been, what the committee's been up to and kind of the work product that's been going on. So, we wanted as staff to bring the Economic Development Committee up to common knowledge level with some of our utilities within the area. So, we asked the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District to come do a presentation at that, that meeting, and they provided a very detailed report and some statistics on where we are with our groundwater, where we are with projecting growth within the city, and what the water district is doing to facilitate that growth by acquiring new water to meet the annual water demand today and in the future. And then, Jeff Davis, the general manager of the past San Gregorio Past Water Agency, also came and spoke to the committee because they're the ones that actually get the, the state water project as well as other local water supplies to this region. So, they're the wholesaler of the water that actually goes ahead and turns that over and sells it to the retailers who then serve your houses or your businesses and so forth. So, those updates were done. We also had the city's consultant for the general plan come do a presentation about a halfway, I call it a halftime show, on exactly where we are with the general plan update currently and where we've been, as well as where we plan on going within the next year. And I know the Economic Development Committee kind of had some lights turn on in their heads because they realized what the, the two-year process involves, what really we are looking for with a general plan that looks at potential building within the next 10 or 15 years, as well as build-out, changing zoning, changing land use designations, and really how that dovetails in with a fiscal analysis or a fiscal model on what could be the benefits of that and some of the hindrances if we don't have balanced growth. And then, one of the other items that's come up recently is the city's looking at partnering with the Mount Santa Sinto Community College for an internship program. So, they have these capabilities at the community college, and we're hoping to meet with their key staff that, that know these programs in and out and see if we can ascertain some interns to come assist us at City Hall, as well as introduce those students to city government and kind of teach them the ropes on, on what to do, and kind of see if they have a career path in mind when they're done. Or if they don't, then they can go, go their way, and at least they have a touch on, on what government's all about. And then, lastly, and the most exciting thing that's come up in the, the committee for a while, is the city business visitation and questioning program. So, the committee's come up with an idea, and right now, it's at infancy stages. And they're compiling questions, a list of questionnaire, or list of questions to go on a questionnaire that each of the committee members would actually go out and meet with some of the local businesses within the city and ask them a series of questions, get to know them, and then report back some of those findings to city staff here, as well as the city council and the members of the committee. So, they were excited about doing that. We're finalizing, grouping up the questions, and we're going to look at those one last time at the next meeting in March. And then, as soon as the committee feels comfortable with that questionnaire, we're going to be bringing that to city council to make sure that the council at large is acceptable with, with their marching orders. And then, we'll, we'll get out there and start meeting with some of the local businesses. It's exciting for me because we haven't done that in, in many, many years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Thank you. The city treasurer report?
I have nothing to report.
City clerk?
I do. Month of January, public records requests. There were a total of 136, all have been responded to. 44.25 hours of the deputy city clerk's time, two and a half hours of other departments' people, and 10 and a half hours of legal time. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing, nothing this evening, ma'am. Excuse me.
City manager report.
Excuse me, it's rude. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. City manager report?
Well, I know the event everybody's been waiting for this evening. So, I think we've covered a lot of the business that we needed to cover. We've got a good agenda coming up for our next meeting. So, bring your sleeping bags and get protein, cold water proteins are best. It's going to be a marathon. And then, keep your fingers crossed because the Rangers are reporting to camp. So, I'm sure we've got another great Major League Baseball season coming up in the American League West. So. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Councilmember Santos? Councilmember White? No?
Just a discussion on the lead stuff you're talking about.
Could we, I got a, I got some communication from Citizen on hillside. What, what do we do for hillsides? Do we build on unstable ground? Do we, just what do we do from a planning perspective and from an ordinance perspective on hillsides? And I don't, I mean, I can certainly research it with you, but I thought that it would be good for the planning department to tell us what other cities do for hillsides, what some of the concerns are, and what we do, just so we can start at least a knowledge sharing.
So, we can do like a little introductory component that will talk about what a hillside or slope protection code is, what its purposes are, and the various methodologies to enact and regulate?
What are the potential risks when you don't have enough guidelines in place?
Do we have an ordinance? And if we don't, what other ordinances look like from other cities?
Sure.
So, it would be nice to get that information all at once.
Okay, so we'll do a hillside protection or slope protection code 101, we'll call it, with some samples from maybe out of the area in terms of how cities are looking at that.
Can I add something in there also?
Sure.
As you're doing a 101, can you go through and answer Mr. Kerbal's concern with the shared parking agreements and stuff?
Oh, sure.
How that works with our ordinance. Seems a little cumbersome, so I'm just curious on what it says.
All right. Any other suggestions? Okay, with that, I will adjourn the city council meeting at 8:35.